Okay, we're good to go, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Andrew, and good evening, everybody, and welcome to this virtual meeting of Daulish Town Council on the 3rd of March. Thank you to all those who have joined the meeting this evening and watching live on Facebook, and thank you to the member public who has joined us this evening, and to all who are watching live. To ensure that this meeting runs as smoothly as possible, all participants have now been muted and will be muted by the town clerk or by yourself when given permission to speak. Those councillors wishing to speak should either raise their hand or preferably click on Participants, and then you'll see the option to raise your virtual digital hand. The town clerk will then assist me with the order of debate as we consider tonight's agenda items. Should there be any disruption to the meeting, the individual will be warned once by myself, and if the disruption continues, I will ask the town clerk to remove them from the meeting. Those being removed will not be permitted to re-enter. Virtual meetings will be recorded, are being recorded, and live streamed, and therefore, should you not wish for your image to be recorded, please turn your camera off now. Okay, so I'd now like to begin the meeting, starting with number six on the For Information page on page two regarding the recording of the meeting. So, as I just said, this meeting is being recorded and screened live on Facebook. So, members of the public are permitted to address councillors present at this meeting regarding agenda items. At the beginning of the meeting, members of the public are given an opportunity to discuss town council activities not on the current agenda after the close of the meeting. The comments of members of the public and electors of the parish who speak before the start of the meeting or following the close of the meeting will not form part of the minutes of the meeting. So, can I ask the member of the public who is here this evening, do you wish to ask a question? Please go ahead if you'd like to.
Sorry, no, thank you. Sorry, I didn't realise, I needed to unmute myself.
Thank you. Okay, so turning over then to page three of the agenda, apologies for absence. Do we have any apologies?
Chairman, just before we take that item, I believe councillor Terry Lawther wishes to speak.
Yes, councillor Lather, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr Clerk and thank you, Madame Mayor. Before we started the meeting, we were talking generally, and councillor Prowse told us that she's suffering quite a bit with the broken arm, and she has, and is feeling particularly tired. And I'm asking you, as a chairman of the tourism group, and she's a member of that group, if you could bring on the items for, on the agenda, as soon as, as far as you can, because she'd like to leave immediately after that, if that's possible.
Thank you, councillor Lather, thank you. So, I'll just, I will, I will ask all councillors now if you can please raise your hand and if you approve of bringing forward on the agenda item number fourteen and item number fifteen, the beginning, to be taken after we discussed the minutes, approved the minutes of the last meeting. Can I ask for your permission if you approve that, please, please raise your hands?
Thank you, Chairman.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, councillor Lather, for basing that, okay. So, apologies for absence, please, do we have any?
Chairman, none received, other than councillor Woods, who's working and hopes to join us shortly.
Okay, thank you. So, those apologies noted, and we look forward to councillor Woods joining us when he can then. Agreement of the agenda between parts one and two, we don't have a part two, so that's fine. Declarations of interest, do we have any for this evening's meeting? Any councillors declarations? Can't see any raised hands. Councillor Morehead, please go ahead. Do you wish to unmute?
I was, oh gosh.
We can hear you, councillor Morehead.
I was trying to, but sorry, lost the picture. Only inasmuch as the, the item about allotments is a CAC matter, that's all. I don't know how that affects anything.
Okay, thank you, councillor Morehead. Councillor Gordon Bradbury, please go ahead, and welcome councillor Woods.
Thank you, Madame Mayor. I just wanted to say I have got an interest, as I do have an allotment, and it is about the same item that councillor Morehead mentioned. I do have an allotment rented through the town council, so I'm happy to talk on the item, but it may be, if members feel it's so fit, that I don't have a vote on that item, but I can certainly give a different perspective to allotments from that point of view. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Gordon Bradbury. So, do we take that declaration now, or do we note that and then take it at the item on the agenda?
No, Chairman, it's for the individual member to decide what interest they may have, but if I may, I would suggest that councillor Gordon Bradbury doesn't have an interest, because this would be an additional allotment land which she wouldn't be a part of, because she already has a plot at Brownsbrook, so I don't consider that she has an interest in that sense.
That's brilliant, thank you, thank you. Okay then, so dispense, did we do dispensations?
Not yet, Chairman.
So, dispensations, to receive and consider requests for dispensations, if there are any?
None received.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. So, minutes of the last meeting, which was held on the 3rd of February, to approve, sign, and adopt those minutes. So, I'm sure all councillors had a chance to read through those, which were circulated with the agenda pack. Do we have any queries about that, or councillors happy to vote to adopt those? I can't see any raised hands, so please raise a hand to approve that we adopt those minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. And Chairman, if I may, sorry, my fault, we did receive an apology from councillor Mayne, I do apologise.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So, welcome again to councillor Woods, please that you could join us this evening, and can we just raise a hand to note the apologies from councillor Mayne, please?
Thank you very much, apologies for that.
Thank you, okay. So, we've approved to bring forward on the agenda items number fourteen and fifteen at the Tourism Strategy Working Group. So, you will have seen with your papers, the agenda pack that was circulated, that we've got a really good document, the Daulish Town Council Tourism Strategy 2021-2022, which has been put together. Thank you, so could I invite the, the chair of the Tourism Strategy Working Group to go ahead to present this item, please?
Thank you, Madame Mayor. Yes, this isn't going to be a long item. Simply to report back to the council that we had a meeting. We had, we invited representatives of the, of the Chamber of Trade, Daulish Chamber of Trade.
Chairman, sorry to interrupt councillor Lather and Madame Mayor. I think we need to take the item fourteen first, if we're doing it in sequential order, which is the appointment to the vacancy, if that's okay?
Oh, right, yeah, sorry, yeah, I've forgotten that one, you're right.
That's my error, apologise for that, okay, so.
Right, yes, we need to talk about whether we need any, any interested members to join the Tourism Strategy Working Group, because we've, we want to be, the vacancy, one of the members decided not to take part. So, have we had any, any offers?
Thank you, councillor Lather. So, was, so this is to invite any interested members to join the Tourism Strategy Working Group to fill the current council vacancy on the group. Councillor Prowse, please go ahead.
Sorry, I'm a bit slow. Yes, I suggested at the meeting that perhaps councillor Mayne, with her long experience of the town and Daulish Warren, would be a good person to have on, because she obviously has a great knowledge of tourism. I have spoken to her, I believe she is interested, unfortunately, she's not here tonight. So, I am going to propose that she joins us, I don't know if I have a second.
Thank you, councillor Prowse. Councillor Lind Pedrick, you had your hand raised next, please go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to second up proposal.
Thank you, councillor Pedrick, thank you. So, we've got a proposal seconded for councillor Lisa Mayne to join the Tourism Strategy Working Group. Could I ask if councillors would like to vote to approve that, that councillor Mayne joins the working group, please, please raise a hand?
That's unanimous, Chairman, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, thank you. So, we, we look forward to councillor Mayne joining the working group, thank you. So, now moving on to item number fifteen, the public consultation. Councillor Lather, if you'd like to go ahead now, please?
Thank you very much, Madame Mayor. Yes, as I started to say before, we, we had a meeting, as, as we said we would, at the last council meeting, and we had, we'd invited representatives from the Daulish Chamber of Trade, the Daulish Warren Tourist Group, Holcombe Residence and Cockwood Residence. All four turned up, which I'm pleased to say, and I don't want to go bang on too much about that, but they're very enthusiastic about the thing. They approved the, the draft report that they'd seen. They liked a lot of the ideas in it, they came up with some suggestions, which we'll incorporate possibly in the future ones, but certainly consider them very, very hard. So, we have progressed further. We've taken the next step, consulting the interested groups from the rest of the parish. So, we are keen on making sure that everybody knows that this is for the whole of the parish. Needless to say, they'll be keen on the idea too. I don't know if you have anything to add to that. Andrew, are you with us? Yeah, I've done, I've done.
I'm doing a councillor trick now. Yes, sorry, the groups that were invited made some very useful comments, and they will obviously be included in the wider consultation responses that will then be considered by the working group, and whether or not they include those comments and refine the document ready to present a final version to the council for adoption, that can then be used to take some of the projects forward that's contained within. So, yeah, it was a useful meeting, I'm not sure if the events officer's got anything else to add? No, so over to members, if they have any comments.
Thank you, Andrew, thank you councillor Lather. So, looking through the Tourism Strategy document, it really does look a very good document. It really, really interesting, interesting facts in there, and I like the SWOT analysis, looking at, for Daulish and the parish as well. Councillor Wiggley, would you like to go ahead, please?
Thank you, Madame Mayor. Yes, I agree, it is, it's a very good document and a very thorough document. I think my only question would be, is it worth thinking about some sort of guidance in the consultation as to what sort of information or answers or input we're looking for from the various consultees? Because at the moment, it's quite a comprehensive document, and I think it's, it's tricky to sort of see how to add to it or comment on it. So, I was just going to suggest that we might sort of just, just offer some guidance as to what we're looking for in terms of feedback on it.
Thank you councillor Wiggley, thank you. Councillor Morehead, I think you were next with your, with your hand raised, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madame Chair. Yes, councillor Lather was referring to the new people who joined the group from the other parts of the parish, and we did have, following the meeting, when they had had longer to read and digest the draft document, we did have a couple of really good responses with very interesting points on them, and I'm sure that those will be looked at in detail and potentially incorporated. It was good to hear views from people outside the town, and I think they were, they were very useful comments, thank you.
Thank you councillor Morehead, thank you. Councillor Taylor, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madame Mayor. Yes, I'm very, very pleased with, with the group's work, the work that it's done, and putting together this, this document, which puts into context some of the things that we've been calling for over the years, and, you know, for instance, the, the playpark for the bandstand and the longer term ambitions, and how, yeah, they form part of, of, of the offer of, of Daulish, of the parish of Daulish. And I very much look forward to, to this, this going forward to consultation.
Thank you councillor Taylor, thank you. Councillor Prowse, would, would you like to go ahead?
Sorry.
Okay.
I was just going to just make the comment that we made to them, that this is, although it's coming forward to you to approve when we finish writing this strategy, that this is a living document which will be updated and changed as circumstances change. And I think that that is a very important point, that it's an ongoing strategy and not one that is going to be written in stone and not altered in the future. And we all know that some of them are very big ambitions with a lot of money involved, but there are lots of small things in here that are, shall we say, quick fixes, which will help Daulish get itself back on, on its feet, thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Prowse, and thank you to all councillors, all members of the Tourism Strategy Working Group for the hard work, and to, to the Projects Officer for the hard work that's gone into putting this strategy document together. It does look really good, and I particularly like the photo of this one, the split signature on the front bit. Councillor Lather, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. I was basically, I was essentially going to just thank people for their comments. The other bit, though, that we want to do is the next step, really, is one way up to take, and that's involving the people of Daulish, the parish, as a whole. We, we need views from people in the parish, we need to know what they think. We need, as councillor Wiggley said, to know, they need to tell us what they would like. And I really would like to stress, the things that they would like. Don't worry, it's going to cost £47 million. We might, we might get the £47 million, you know, although if it's a variety of ideas, but we probably won't. But we probably will do a lot of the little things that councillor Prowse referred to. We can probably do quite a lot of the quick fixes, and the big dreams are possible. I've finished, I have it in my mind for a long time, I know councillor Pedrick will be on this one. The idea of river taxis going down the coast from one, one of our little towns to the next, takes the strain off the road, it answers so many problems, and would add an awful lot to the town, it's an exact lot to the offer. We are a seaside town, and we, virtually because of railway, we ignore the sea. And we're just doing something now with the sea wall, that's going to be a promenade, which is something we've never had in Daulish. Really, the lawn is Daulish's promenade, and we've never had one that looks out to the sea. Well, we've got one, and so they will have one, that does. We need to make the most of that. So, maybe we can have a little harbour and little boats, maybe we can. It would cost money, but maybe we can convince people to back us and having a little harbour. There are lots of other things. Councillor Taylor mentioned the bandstand, that's a longstanding desire from a lot of people. I'd like to say ban, place the bandstand as well. There's loads of things, but we need ideas, we need thoughts from the people. We need, we're going to publicise what we're saying now. This is important, if you like, with a launch of a public consultation. We want to get hold of ideas from the people, see what you would like to see. I will tell you whether we'd like to do it, and if we can do it, we will. If anybody would like to help me to bang the drum, I'd be very grateful. It's a bit like the starvation, you bang it, bang the drums and get attention, and that's what I'm doing. Come and join us, let's get the tourism. Is this the future goal we're talking about? It's not playing about, we just make, drawing a few maps and saying that's, you know, putting the odds on up. This is the future of Daulish. You've heard, the councillor today, you'll hear a lot of what the world, the world needs to be in the future after the Covid nineteen problem. It's a new start. I'd like to see, we'd like to see Daulish have a new start, the whole of the parish. Doesn't mean to say we're all rubbish, needs to be all knocked down, we don't want to do that. We want to make the best of what we've got, we want to identify the best and improve it and add to it. So, any thoughts and people have, let's have them. Thank you for the time.
Thank you councillor Lather, thank you. So, councillor Dawson, please go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring up, I'm sure we've spoken about this before at full council, but I'm not sure we got anywhere. About eighteen months ago, there was a town centre consultant that came around a few of the towns in the area who was commissioned by Teenbridge. We didn't hear anything back about that, but it wasn't, wasn't our commissioning that we'd done, and I'm just wondering whether that might be a valuable piece of work to be chased down and found and pilfered.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dawson, I do vaguely remember, I do vaguely remember that report from the, that was commissioned by Teenbridge District Council. I, yes, I do vaguely remember that, so we could look that out and add, you know, feed that into this strategy document if it's, if it's relevant currently. Councillor Morehead, you've raised your hand, please go ahead.
Thank you again, Madame Mayor. Yes, just listening to all the exciting thoughts, there's a wishlist. Some of the items are very big on the wishlist. My thoughts were that the tourism strategy initially is to get us out there, to be known, to revitalise the area, especially following all this awful time of Covid, and really using Visit South Devon, whatever, our own websites, whatever we can do in the meantime, the Love Daulish website, to showcase what is here now, what is in the parish already and surrounding, and what we are linked to. This is the immediate stuff that we can actually get our teeth into, and this is what I think we, we need to get on with. We need to be saying, we're great, come here, come and see us, use the town, use the shops, visit the areas, go for green walks, go to Powderham, go to Star Cross, catch the ferry to Exmouth, but come now, thank you.
Thank you councillor Morehead. So, thank you. So, we're looking at approving the document, this document, and to put it out to public consultation, to ask for the public's views and their ideas. So, any other councillors wish to make comments before we go to, before we go to a vote? Okay, so then, can I, well, the councillor Lather has, has proposed that, that we go for this, that we put this out to public consultation, so can I ask for a second for that, please? Thank you councillor Taylor, thank you. So, could we all now go to approve this, please, please raise your hands?
Unanimous, Chairman.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you very much. So, now, thank you councillor Prowse for attending today's meeting, and I was happy to bring those items forward, and so that you could attend those items on the agenda. So, if you, if you are, feel able to stay for the rest of the meeting, then please do, but thank you for joining us this evening, and I hope that you make a good recovery.
Thank you, Madame Mayor. I would just say, until after I've listened to the town clerk, because I do understand he's got some update for us about the water under the colonnade, or he's, he and the deputy mayor have been working on this, and I just would like to hear that, because I've had phone calls about it at home, and then I will be leaving you, thank you very much, your good wishes.
Thank you councillor Prowse. Okay, so now getting back to the agenda, with item number six, minutes of committees for adoption. So, this is to receive the minutes of the following committees for adoption, which is the Civic Communities Committee, held on the 20th of January this year. The Finance and General Purposes Committee, held on the 21st of January this year, and the Planning Committee, held on the 28th of January this year. Please, can I ask for proposals and seconders for those three meetings? So, starting off with CAC, councillor Morehead.
Thank you, Madame Mayor. Yes, I'd like to bring to your attention the, the minutes from the Civic Communities Meeting, 20th of January, and put for, put them forward for adoption, please.
Thank you very much councillor Morehead, can I ask for a second, please? Thank you councillor Dawson. Okay, we'll vote on all of these together at the end. So, the chair, please, or the proposer from FNGP?
Thank you, Madame Mayor. Yes, I'd like to put forward the minutes from the Finance General Purposes Committee meeting of the 21st in January, 21st of January this year for adoption, please.
Thank you councillor Wiggley, can I ask for a second, please? Thank you councillor Pedrick, thank you. And then the Planning Committee, please, can I ask for a poser, please? Thank you councillor Gordon Bradbury.
Thank you, Madame Mayor, I'd like to put forward the minutes for the Planning Committee, held on 28th of January 2021 for adoption, please.
Thank you very much, can I ask for a second, please councillor Taylor? Thank you very much. So, could I ask all to vote in favour of adopting those committees' meeting minutes, please?
Thank you, Chairman.
Excellent, thank you. So, that's all done, thank you. So, now moving on to town clerk's report, please, Andrew, thank you.
Thank you, Madame Mayor. I've got quite a few comments to make regarding the flooding under the colonnade, which has been happening for quite some time now. I last spoke to Network Rail back in January, who informed me that their engineers were investigating a potential solution, and they would send through the details to me as soon as they had it. I've chased my contact there a number of times since and not received anything, and last left a voicemail this, early this afternoon, and as I expected, I haven't heard anything. What I would say is, members of the public who have been emailing into the council, please log it with Network Rail to, to add pressure to the fact that no one can use Marine Parade if they are, if they have accessibility issues, because they can't go over the steps at the far end. They can do that by calling 03457 114141, or they can... Or they can go to networkrail.co.uk forward slash communities forward slash contact hyphen us. Or if they are OFA with Twitter, they can use the Twitter handle at southwest RRP. That's Romeo Romeo Papa. And they can make their comments that way. But unless we can let, you know, levy that pressure. It could be some time before we, we get some action. And obviously with lockdown potentially easing from March and the potential for staycations happening, we really want that sorted as soon as possible. So that's that. In terms of the town council submitting a business interruption insurance claim for our loss of income because of Covid, we haven't been successful. The claim did not fall in their eyes into the remit of the Supreme Court ruling that happened not that long ago. So unfortunately, we haven't been successful there. However, we have been successful in three grants from Teen Bridge in relation to the Covid pandemic. The first grant we received was about eighteen hundred pounds. The second grant was approximately two thousand. And we believe we may be eligible for a further nine thousand from the third grant. This is still awaited for confirmation from Teen Bridge. So at least there is a bit of positivity there. In terms of the kickstart scheme, all of our information has been submitted. And we were commended by Torbay, who is acting as our gateway organisation. We were commended for the information we submitted. So we now await the DWP's decision that the job descriptions meet their eligibility criteria. And then we will await references being passed through to us of sixteen to twenty five year olds that may be eligible to take up those two positions that we are advertising for. In terms of face to face meetings, you'll be aware that in February, we deferred the item considering what our plans might be, should the government not extend the regulations permitting virtual meetings. Nothing has changed. We still do not know what the government intend to do. But as we were saying in February, time was short. It must be even shorter now. I know that national organisations are still lobbying. The Secretary of State is minded to extend them. However, he hasn't got control over the parliamentary timetable and they keep saying they don't have the time. So obviously that will be coming back in April and we'll have to see what happens in the meantime. Just for members' information, I will be calling an additional council meeting on Wednesday, the twenty fourth of March for two items. Unfortunately, when the agenda for this meeting went out on Friday, we received our final interim audit report late that evening, which I then didn't pick up until Monday. So the agenda had already been published, but we excuse me, we need to get that considered before the end of the financial year. In addition to our risk management report, which we considered at council last year. So that would be the twenty fourth of March at the usual time. The Brooklights, following CAC's resolution to extend the lighting until March, that's been approved by Teen Bridge. It's going to cost an extra hundred and ten pounds, which is fairly small for I considering. So the lights will remain on until the end of March. And that's on the same basis that we understand that not all the lights are fully functioning. And should anything happen in between, then it would be for us, if we wanted to, to make those repairs. But the main thing is they will, they will remain on. And finally, chairman, just a reminder to anybody that might be watching and to yourselves that the civic award is open for nominations and they need to be submitted to us by Thursday, the eleventh of March. Hard copy forms can be put through the door at the manor house or they can be completed electronically and sent to admin@dawlish.gov.uk. That's for an individual nomination and one for a local group. And that needs to be with us by Thursday, the eleventh of March. And that is it, chairman. If there's any questions, I'm happy to try and answer.
Thank you very much, Andrew, for that comprehensive report. Thank you. And that is, that's really interesting to know about the the update about the flooding underneath the, the viaduct, which I've had lots of queries about as well. And thank you for the, how we can chase that up with Network Rail with the phone number and the Twitter and website. We've got four councillors wishing to speak. I can't remember which order the hands were raised.
Councillor John Pedrick first, chairman.
Councillor Pedrick, please go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick update from the front regarding the flooding under the colonnade. I, I walked that route this morning and yes, it was flooded. It was quite deep and it's shallowous. It was probably ankle deep. But I'm rugged and I managed to get through it. But I went down again this afternoon and the level had dropped quite considerably. It was possible to, to walk around the edge, but there was a pump running. So I think Network Rail are on to it. Maybe just grab the attention of the guys there because they've obviously got the pump on site. And, and they would probably quite happily do it for us. It's worth a try anyway. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pedrick. Thank you. Councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This isn't the first time it's happened. It's happened several times. It's very distressing for local residents who've been accessing Marine Parade since the fifties and cannot do so. And we have, we hope, a gateway out of the Covid where we are hoping to reinvigorate our town and parish and invite new visitors here. And this has all been on the national news, this wonderful new Marine Parade. It's going to be a bit pointless if they can't get there. It would appear, I'm only suggesting that it's something to do with the works, maybe drains are getting blocked or whatever. But what I was going to ask was, the clerk has very, very kindly and very quickly given us a phone number and an email address. I would ask, please, Andrew, can you A, circulate members with that in an email? And B, can you put it on the council website so that, or social media in one way or another? So that members of the public can join in, because the more voices, the better. It's all very well, we know that they can provide a pump when they're asked to, but that shouldn't be happening. We shouldn't have to ask. There shouldn't be a flood. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morehead. Councillor Goodwin-Fadri, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, with my district hat on, was in touch with Network Rail today in the same way as the town clerk mentioned. And just a quick comment, they did assure me that it was going to get cleared today. They have invested, they have asked the BAM engineers to keep an eye on that and to use the pump for both sides of the viaduct. So I'm hopeful that we're not going to be in a similar situation, but it was a high tide and it was the sea washing up a lot of sand that's blocked the drains. It's a similar problem that's been seen before. And councillor Morehead, I was just about to say the same. If we could have those details. I certainly think that members of the public would be armed to be able to get their voices heard and be able to make their complaints and their points to Network Rail directly. So thank you very much for your quick action there, Andrew.
Thank you. And councillor Taylor, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'd like to thank Network Rail for that very speedy response. So, so many thanks to, to our clerk and to NGB as well for, for adding her penneth at the appropriate time to the appropriate person. It's good news month, isn't it? We're potential nine K extra from via Teen Bridge. That'd be great. But also about the Brooklights, that we've got those able to be switched on with, with much less fuss than the last time we asked for an extension. So I'm very pleased about that, Andrew. They must have, they must have heard you coming and thought, well, we'd better sort you out quickly. Otherwise, it's only going to end with a problem. But no, very, very good and nice that we've got those, those cheerful illuminations until, until the end of March. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Pals, please go ahead.
I'd just like to thank Andrew for his excellent paperwork when it came to the kickstart. When we missed out first round with Teen Bridge and, and looked like we weren't going to get anywhere and he immediately got on to the case and we've now gone in with Torbay. And I look forward to you acquiring two young personages for training and working with us because I'm sure that you've got a very heavy workload at the moment. So the sooner the better. I'm sure you'll be reporting to staffing. We have a meeting next week. So hopefully you'll have an update by then. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you councillor Pals. Thank you. Okay, any other questions or we'll move on to the next item then. So this is my town mayor's report for March. So Dawlish is a fair trade town and has had the fair trade town status since March two thousand and seven. And in this second week of fair trade fortnight, it is a good time to recognise the work of the Dawlish Fair Trade Friends in both establishing and maintaining this. Dawlish is one of the six hundred fair trade towns in the UK. And indeed is one of the two thousand plus fair trade, fair trade towns worldwide. The climate crisis is already affecting the global food supply and really affecting the farmers and workers in low income countries. With thanks to the Devon Highways team who've recently repainted white lines on some of our roads in Dawlish, helping make the streets of Dawlish safer for road users. Thank you to all the young people who entered our storytelling competition on the adventures of Luke the wave walker. We had a good number of entries and well done to the two very talented joint winners. I enjoyed awarding the certificates and prizes from a safe distance to the winners recently. So we have now said goodbye to the wave walker Luke. And thank you very much to Network Rail and their engineers and the teams in the Orange Army. The seats and benches along the seawall are welcomed and a great asset, particularly in this first sunny weekend after the wall reopened. The continued rollout of the vaccination programme is encouraging and gives hope. Thank you to all the key workers and the volunteers. Stay safe, hands, pace and space. And just to mention that I have organised for this Friday evening a virtual fair trade quiz, quiz night. So it's part of fair trade fortnight. I've organised it. Details are on the Dawlish Town Council website and the Facebook page. And I can send out further info as well to you. Thank you. Okay, councillor Morehead, if you have a question, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes. Poor Luke's wave walker or skywalker has now left us. I thought he might have just fallen for Dawlish and stayed. But I'm interested to know and to hear a mention of the winners of the competition. I realise you would have put it out on social network. I don't always tune into those things. I'd be very interested to know the age groups and the names of those, if you're allowed to publish them or speak them.
Thank you councillor Morehead. So I, I am aware that there will be a press release going to the, out to the Dawlish Gazette this week. It has already been sent by our projects officer. So this was a a storytelling competition that was launched in December for young people to enter with the title The Adventures of Luke Wave Walker. You know, with the chance to write up to five hundred words. And it was for different age categories. We had a good number of entries and the two joint winners were from the junior, very junior category and senior category. And there will be more information about that in the press release that's gone out to I think the Dawlish Gazette and the Mid Devon Advertiser and I think also to Dawlish Love News. So very well done to those winners. They, they are very talented, excellent stories that they wrote. And thank you to everybody that entered our competition.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now moving on to the county councillors' reports. We've had a good report circulated from councillor Clatworthy, which I'm sure that you've all seen. And may I ask there any questions or comments that councillors have about that? Okay, so it's lots of information in councillor Clatworthy's report and thank you to him if he's, if he's watching online. Okay, so town count, district councillors' reports, sorry, next item. Councillor Pedrick, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last week, I received a complaint from a resident regarding issues at Lee Mount. Litter, graffiti and antisocial behaviour. One morning, apparently at eleven o'clock, sorry, eleven AM, a young semi-clothed couple was seen to be openly engaged in rhythmic horizontal activity on the picnic bench. The picnic table was provided by Dawlish Town Council and originally positioned on a sizable concrete plinth overlooking the sea. Unfortunately, the picnic table was illicitly moved into one of the shelters. I emailed the portfolio holder and also the TBC officers and the police as well. I was really quite pleased to receive a rapid response from the officers, actually within minutes. And the response was that the picnic bench would be repositioned on the concrete plinth and bolted down. They also agreed that cleansing will remove the graffiti as a priority. Environmental wardens have added, have added the site to their littering hotspot list. And a new antisocial behaviour officer has been asked to look at the issues here. I walked through there today and I'm pleased to say that the picnic bench has also been moved back to its original location and it's firmly bolted down. A while before that, I had a complaint from a number of residents regarding the overgrown home oak hedgerow at Lee Mount alongside the A three seven nine on, on Timberthill. Following conversations and exchanges of emails with officers, aspect tree services, team trees and the residents. An acceptable compromise was reached and the works were scheduled to take place this week. I checked today and I'm pleased to report the works were progressing well. In fact, they've probably been completed by now. There was also an issue, a lot of concern about a recent planning application for four dwellings at Bad Lake Hill. Residents were expressing their concerns about it and mainly about the number of vehicles actually accessing it because it is a narrow road. I visited the area and the proposed site for the new dwellings. Fortunately, the town council planning committee had subsequently met and included the item on its agenda. The committee decided to request that should the planning officer who will have to, that will have the delegated authority decide on the outcome of the application, be minded to approve the application, the decision would be referred to the Teenbridge Planning Committee. And as a ward member, I'll be able to attend the meeting and address the planning committee and support the views and concerns of the residents. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Pedrick. Thank you. And that is good to know that the, the actions have been taken up at Lee Mount. Which, which you reported so quickly. Thank you for that. Councillor Linda Pedrick, please go ahead.
Chairman, I believe it was councillor Wiggly next.
Oh, I'm sorry. I haven't, I haven't got the order of hands in front of me. Councillor Wiggly, please go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, very quickly, just a couple of very quick things. In the past couple of weeks, we've had the budget passed at Teen Bridge. And following on from our conversations last month about building council houses. I'm very pleased that the programme Teen Bridge one hundred for building council homes is in that, in that budget, which now gives us an ongoing programme, building one hundred homes, a pipeline of one hundred homes to come along through the coming years to be constructed by Teen Bridge across the district. So that was very good. The other thing that's come out from Teen Bridge is the housing strategy, which gets reviewed on a regular basis. And that is currently out for review. I think you've probably all seen a an email through from the town clerk asking for input to the housing strategy. And if anybody would, would please take the time to read it and to provide some feedback on the housing strategy, that would be most gratefully received. And I think that's all I will take your time for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Wiggly. Thank you. Councillor Linda Pedrick, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Around this Lee Terrace, where the bins are on the corner, I've had quite a few complaints from the residents there. A few weeks ago, I got in touch with officers, actually a few months ago now. But they have actually now got on their work of programme, programme of works. They are going to look at enclosing those bins. So it won't be quite societally, but it won't be done as quickly as we would have liked it to have been done because of the pandemic. because of the pandemic. Just a little bit of good news, which I read today, which came in today. The climate change officer in Teambridge has successfully won a 2.3 million pounds grant under the public sector decarbonisation scheme, which will mean that the Lido, Broadmeadow and Newton Abbey Leisure Centre will have a lot of work done to them. They are anticipating a carbon reduction of 280 tonnes of CO2 in a year, which is equivalent to the carbon emissions of 100 homes. The project needs to be started in March and it's supposed to be completed in September. I know that Dawlish Leisure Centre isn't mentioned there, but I do understand, and I will check on this, that there, again, that's already in the programme of works for the future. So that's some, some good news for us. And it will be great because I do know a lot of people in Dawlish love swimming in the Lido, especially towards the winter time. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pedrick. Thank you. So councillor Morehood, do you have a question? Please go ahead.
Yes, I, I thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes. I was pleased to listen to all of those. Councillor John Pedrick, I just wanted to point out that the matter of the picnic bench had come up at Civic Amenities and it was on the report and we were awaiting it to be moved and to be bolted down. And although it was a heavy duty bench, obviously there's an awful lot of people who can gather around it and carry it. Normal, a couple of normal people couldn't have moved it. For councillor Wrigley, concerning houses being built by Timbridge District Council, am I right in thinking that the right to buy will still apply to those? And if so, will there be a covenant or a proviso that if they are sold, it is only to local people? And also that any money raised will be ploughed back into building replacement units?
Money that came in from the right to buy. So Teambridge Original Stock was moved over to teen housing many, many years ago. And money has been coming in from the right to buy sales of that, which has been used towards housing. So yes, it continued, any, any such money would continue to be used for housing in that way. And the issue of right to buy is something that is, is government mandated and there are only limited numbers of things that one can do with that. So I think they probably are going to be within that. In most cases, there will be some times when it's not, it's not possible to stipulate beyond that who they then sell them on to because we can't put that in because of the government legislation. However, whilst they remain as Teambridge houses, they would of course be going to local people. So there's only so much we can do until that right to buy is amended, shall we say. Personally, I would change it very drastically.
Thank you. I asked because I believe a while ago now in Widdecombe in the Moor, they built some houses there and they did have quite restrict, restrictive covenants on what could happen to them when they, when they were sold on.
You're absolutely right and that comes up on a regular basis and it's because it's in the National Park.
Ah, oh, that doesn't seem quite fair.
Different planning rules apply for Dartmoor National Park.
Thank you. And if I might just for councillor Linda Pedrick, mentioning the, the bins at Italy Terrace, yes, it would be good. They have been party screened by shrubs, but when the shrubs are cut, of course, you can see the bins. But this is just my comment that there, this is a general problem in, in town. A lot of pavements, particularly along places like Old Town Street, are permanently full of bins now. You can't actually walk along without stepping into the side of the road, where people have small terraced houses. And now they have to have bins and not bags, although they can ask actually to have a bag. They leave the bins out permanently and I don't know the answer to it, but it is a general problem. And thank you for looking into that.
Thank you councillor Morehood. Okay. So I can't see any other hands raised. So moving on to item number 11 then, town councillors' reports. Councillor Dawson, I, I think you were first, but I can't see the order of hands raised, so.
I think it's just about. Thank you. So I have, I have three, three things to bring up really. One was just a feedback from the last Dawlish Action for Youth meeting, where the team are continuing to try and engage with young people virtually, seeing less faces than obviously the face-to-face times. I would imagine because young people are on Zoom and things most days for school. But the team have been doing some mental, young people's mental health courses and things like that. So it sounds like they're going to be well equipped for when it is safe for them to recommence face-to-face. So that was really nice to meet up with them. I did contact last week, but she was on leave, Jenny Turner from the CCG, again about the MIU to see what the update was or if there was an update. And she did only get back to me yesterday, which is why I couldn't put a report in because she had been on leave. So she gave me this statement, which I'll read out quickly in case there's anyone watching. So despite some successful recruitment from a recent advertisement, we are still experiencing a gap in workforce to support the reopening of our minor injuries units. We are currently recruiting again to these posts, which will allow to the reopening of Dawlish and Topless MIUs. Unfortunately, we cannot confirm reopening date at this moment, but the trust is actively doing all that is possible to support the reopening of these services, which I find a lot more reassuring than the communications some months ago. So hopefully, yes. And then the last one, just on a very lovely note, I had an email yesterday from a senior nurse working in the NHS who's been commuting backwards and forwards back to Dawlish, who has referred to the daffodils. So she wanted to extend her sincere gratitude to all the councillors and residents who are involved in the planting of the daffodils some years ago. They are spectacular this year. And she said it's been a real boost and put a smile on her face to and from a very stressful job at the moment. So I just wanted to extend that and say also, I'm really enjoying them. So thank you very much. I think that was the, originally the brainchild of councillor Mary Laven and I think there are other councillors here who donned their trousers and many residents as well over months. So it looks outstanding. I'm really quite proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dawson. Thank you. Councillor Linda Pedrick, you're, you're next in the, in the digital hand queue.
Thank you, Chair. I've received a letter today from a student at Oakwood Court College. It says, Dear Dawlish Town Council, I am writing to ask for your approval on our class project, Project Cleanup. We are looking for permission to attach handmade poo bag dispensers around Dawlish in common areas where members of the public walk their dogs. These handmade dispensers will be made from recycled plastic bottles with cable ties that can be attached to lampposts, fences or trees. This is to enable people who don't have a bag to have to pick up after their dog. Yours sincerely, Brendan. Brendan. The teachers actually contacted me as well. And she said during a class discussion, one of the students in the class mentioned that they had seen a lot of dog waste around Dawlish. I agree that this does seem to be a growing issue. The students' words were, we are fed up with seeing poo from dogs on the ground and people not picking it up. I mean, they sometimes pick it up and then just leave the bag where they picked it up and do not put it in the bins provided. They then researched what people have done in their local areas to tackle this problem. And they came across an article where a young girl had created the poo bag dispenser using plastic bottles and zip ties and tied them to the local lampposts and gates around parks. They felt that something similar could be done in Dawlish. And they've looked at costings to recreate something similar using recycled bottles, poo bags and zip ties. They've also walked into Dawlish Town and took some pictures of where they felt they would be most beneficial. So if they get permission to put these up, they plan to create and put five handmade dispensers around Dawlish, create a logo and a polite message to remind people to pick up after their dog. And they will create a plan of how often to restock these dispensers. So what I suppose I'm asking is, is it okay? And with the council mind, if I followed this up with them and had a look at what areas they were thinking of and seeing where they're going to need to get the planning permissions from and then perhaps come back to council with a, a firmer proposal from the college?
Thank you councillor Pedrick. And I think that sounds a really lovely idea and really, really exciting that the, that the young people have, have come up with that idea. I'm, I'm, I for one, I'm really, I'm positive about that. Can I ask Andrew for his advice?
Chairman, chairman might I suggest if councillor Pedrick is happy to, to seek further information and perhaps ask officers to add it to the next CAC agenda?
Okay, thank you. Thank you councillor Pedrick for bringing, for bringing that. So yes, if it can be added to the next CAC agenda, thank you. Thank you. So the next town councillor, who's next in the digital hand queue? Councillor John Pedrick, please go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last week I attended the Tourism Strategy Working Group meeting as a member and was greatly encouraged to hear that following the Prime Minister's announcements on the 22nd of February, one of our local holiday parks has been inundated with telephone calls and emails requesting holiday bookings. Potentially this could be a busy year for local tourism. This indicates that even though it's been a gloomy year, there are green shoots of economic recovery beginning to emerge. A number of tourists who normally holiday abroad will be visiting Dawlish possibly for the first time. Hopefully the holiday experiences will meet their expectations and they will consider Dawlish as a destination for future holidays. A number of us have already received our vaccination against COVID-19. We've had our shots in the arm. Now hopefully we're about to witness a huge shot in the arm for tourism in the South West. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Pedrick. Thank you. So moving on councillor Morehood, please go ahead.
Chairman, sorry, it's councillor Heath next.
Sorry, I'm not looking at the order of hands. Councillor Heath, please go ahead. Apologies for that.
No worries. Thank you. Yeah, just going back on a couple of questions. One councillor Dawson just wanted to sort of throw something at you as it were. You mentioned about the hospital and as Roz isn't here, which I'm sure she would have asked. So I'm just guess asking it. You say you're hoping this will happen on the reopening for general small accidents. Sort of personally picking up vibes because we haven't been there. What do you think the chances are from what you hear and the feel of it that this actually will happen, say by the summer? Or is it just impossible to gauge? Or do you have an opinion on that one?
I, I wouldn't want to speculate to be honest. I think there's so much, there's so much of the kind of manpower and resources going into vaccinations at the moment that I, as I say, they've, they've advertised and they've struggled. I think they have a lot of people who are shielding now. A lot of their staff will be shielding until April as well. So that's kind of, kind of delayed things too. I'm really reassured that their message is that they are doing all they can and that their aim is 100% to be opening both those units because that kind of felt a little rocky a few months ago, just on a personal level. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to speculate, but I would hope that there'll be people queuing up to work in lovely Dawlish MIU and that will be, will be bouncing in there, cut, bleeding and needing attention as soon as possible because we really do need that unit for local people.
Yeah, well, thank you. I'm sure you'll be on to them and you'll give us some more regular updates and perhaps. Yeah, and if we don't here, maybe we should all start going on. Right, one other thing that I want to pick up on the dog poo. I might have missed something and dropped off asleep. Just wondering, I wrote a few notes down here. Have we asked the Teambridge District sort of officer, which I think we, well, we did have one. I don't know if he's still got a dog warden, what their opinion is. A little bit concerned about hygiene because obviously if you're doing something, nobody wants to be sued for picking up something if the containers aren't quite correct. And also in their plan, have they got an emptying plan and where will they empty it? I don't know if those sort of questions have been asked, but I just thought I'd raise them just to see how, how much they thought about this because it sounds really good, but it could be full of problems. What, what do we know?
Chairman, just before I hand to councillor Linda Pedrick, I would imagine it's the containers to hold the bags for people, to enable people to pick up dog mess and which can then be placed in the appropriate bin. It's not a suggested place for, to put dog waste, but I'm sure councillor Linda Pedrick will be able to confirm that.
Yeah, councillor Heath, I think you must have fell asleep because the last point was create a plan of how often we will restock these dispensers. So it's just initial thoughts and then hopefully we'll be able to come back to CAC with a more definite and detailed proposal.
Right, thank you. I know it's a very serious problem if we can get on top of any litter. If you saw that programme the other night about litter all over the country is becoming a serious thing. That wasn't poo, it was dumping. That's all part of the same thing. It's pretty shocking. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Heath. Thank you councillor Pedrick. So councillor Morehood, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Really, I put my hand up not to give a report because nobody wants to know all the things I've been to and done and whatever else. That's part of the job. So I think that's taken as read. But I did want to respond to the item raised by councillor Linda Pedrick about the proposal from Oakhill, Oakdive College. I just wanted to say that it's not very many years ago that this town council actually sponsored and provided dispensers for these bags around the town. All that happened was people took every single one out of them. So I'm delighted to know that young people are noticing the problem and maybe that will help put a different slant on it. But I just wanted to say that this is, this isn't new. It has been tried. And unfortunately, even when people do put something in a bag, I fetch them out of the hedges round here and out of the banks. You can't, it's unbelievable what people do with bags of dog excrement. It, it will be good to see if anything happens. I, I believe under the strategy that Timbridge produced last year about dogs and general rules and regulations, because it's only online unless you actually want to know. You're not going to look it up, are you? I think it's being revised at the moment. But as far as I understand, you can be fined for not having bags on you and to be ready to be used. But we can not hope. It's lovely when you see much loved dogs with very careful owners, but unfortunately there do seem to be rather a lot who are not so careful about the public spaces that we all share. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morehood. Thank you. Councillor Pedrick, did you have your hand raised just then? Did you wish to say something?
Just to respond please. Yeah, just to respond. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm actually on that group councillor Morehood at Teambridge and I felt that was why I would be useful to speak to, take this forward with this group and see if we could get anywhere. And yes, you can get fined, but you have to provide the evidence for, for, for you to be fined. And they will come and, and deal with it. They did do a case in Dawlish where they were told the person gave a name and they went and visited that person in the house and they gave them a warning and said the next time they would be fined. So everybody's just doing their best and every little bit helps. And I think if, if young people like this can feel that they're doing something to benefit the town, then we shouldn't discourage them.
Thank you councillor Pedrick. Thank you. Councillor Mary Lather, you have your hand raised. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just, just to confirm that I haven't been asleep. I have listened and I'm querying now what the town clerk suggested that this went to CAC. So therefore. So therefore, is he ask, is he asking that CAC actually discuss this topic? I'm talking about the dog.
Chairman, if I may, I would, I would see Civic Communities Committee as the natural committee for this topic to be discussed at.
Thank you. Well, it, it was just that so much was going on and yet you'd said to send it over to CAC. And I just wanted to make sure that it would be on the CAC agenda and for the members of the CAC to deal with it. Am I correct?
Yes, absolutely. I, I think at the moment members are just asking questions of uh, the town councillor and, and, and that's as far as it goes really in terms of any decision making.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, so I can't see any other hands raised, so we shall now go on to the next item on our agenda, number 12, Dawlish Gateway Signs. So this is to receive an update on the town gateway signs project, which I seem to remember was on our agenda the last time we actually met in person, which seems a very long time ago. Um, Andrew, would you like to go ahead please?
Thank you, Chairman. I'll defer to councillor Pedrick if I may. I, I think he has got some information and I do have a little bit of an update as well.
Okay, thank you councillor John Pedrick, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, over a year ago, I suggested that we erected signs defining our parish boundaries, um, which would also welcome tourists to the area. This was approved at full council well in excess of a year ago. And we commissioned a local artist Catherine Dorum to do the artwork for this, for the signs. Um, highways were requested to advise where the signs could be erected. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to move forward as county haven't been able to recommend suitable locations. I, I think that Holcombe Dip would be a good location, but a housing developer is currently displaying signage at that location as are residents who have erected a sign displaying Save Holcombe Beach. Hopefully county council will consider our request at a later date to position a sign on the A379 in the Holcombe Dip. I've recently had conversations and exchanged emails with the owners of the large meadow that sits along the Cockwood Street, the A379. They have agreed that it would be acceptable to put in one of our parish signs on their land, approximately midway between the halfway garage and the bend. There is more than adequate distance between the proposed location of the sign and the bend to ensure that it wouldn't distract motorists. As the sign will be on private land, I believe that we will need to apply for planning permission. I have contacted a local printer, sign maker, and asked for an approximate price, not an estimate, just a ballpark price for a sign which is made out of aluminium, eight foot by five feet with two support poles and all the necessary graphics and fixings. The estimated, estimated supply price is slightly less than one thousand pounds. The landowner has offered to erect the sign for us without charge. The sign will define the gateway to our parish. I will also advise, it will also advise potential tourists that our parish is open for business and additionally it will possibly encourage tourists to stop in our town and explore the areas. Now, we've already approved this at, at town council, but I feel we might have to amend that proposal slightly. The clerk will guide us on this because of having to go for planning permission now, I don't know. But hopefully with your agreement tonight colleagues, we'll be able to move this item forward. Hopefully then within about eight weeks' time, the sign could be in place and effectively give local tourism this much needed shot in the arm that we're talking about earlier. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pedrick, and that's, that's really interesting to hear about, um, and where, where the, um, proposed positioning will be. Um, so, Andrew, do you wish to speak first or shall I go to councillor Morehead?
No, I'm, I'm happy to, to speak now, Chairman. It's very short. I have received, um, a document from the county regards guidance on community name signs. And I've also asked the question of our legal advisers, uh, whether we would need some sort of licence or lease to cite the sign on private land. So, um, that may take a little longer to come back. But certainly perhaps at the April meeting, we would be able to put something to you that will enable a decision to be made and us go forward.
Excellent, thank you. Um, councillor Morehead first please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yes, I was keen to see this revised as part of the tourism strategy. This is a, a quick win if you like, um, to interest people in the town. I know the designs that John was looking at looked really, really nice. Um, the only thing I was wondering, John, was since our parish extends part of the way up the hill into Tinmouth, and I'm assuming that the sign at that end of the town will be saying welcome to Dawlish as they come from Tinmouth, that maybe it's possible that there's another site, um, just before you get down towards the dip and just as you leave. It's just a thought. Uh, and even that's a problem because of course it's all private properties and pavements and whatever, but it's just a thought. But I, I really look forward to getting them because I've enjoyed seeing the one at the top of the hill there at Tinmouth Hill, uh, going down into Tinmouth. And I'm thinking, that's just the sort of thing that councillor Pedrick was talking about. We need ours. Thank you.
What happened? Um, I got muted. Um, councillor Wiggley, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yeah, all sounds very good and good progress and, and thank you for doing that. And I too look forward to these signs going up. Um, I was going to make a similar comment that Holcombe, of course, is included within the parish and so it needs to be uh, the far side of Holcombe really, because, uh, um, our Holcombe sign coming into Holcombe is quite a long way up uh, the hill into Tinmouth. But on the other, the other end, if I have in mind where councillor Pedrick was describing, I think technically that may be in Star Cross, so we might have to ask the Star Cross Planning, uh, Planning Committee for approval to put the sign there.
Thank you councillor Wiggley. Councillor Pedrick, did you have your hand raised there? Did you wish to?
Well, I, I would, yes, I would like to respond if I may, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I mean technically it might well be a few metres outside the parish boundary. The parish boundary actually follows the, the line of, of the brook which meanders down through that meadow. I think to be honest with you, we probably would be about 50 metres away from the actual parish boundary itself. But it seems to be a really good location because it'll be attention getting, it's on a straight road. Motorists will be able to see it for probably half a mile away. Um, and I think it will give everybody that's visiting our area a really good field that factor. And hopefully we can move it forward quite quickly now.
Excellent. Okay, thank you councillor Pedrick. Um, councillor Dawson, I think you had your hand raised first, please go ahead.
Chairman councillor Heath was next.
Councillor Heath, please go ahead, I apologise.
No, no worries, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, it was just coming back to councillor Pedrick. I just, um, remember at that meeting, you say it was about a year ago, um, you proposing that we put the other end of the parish, um, that sign just past New Road if I remember right, opposite sort of the own Tinmouth one as you're going down the hill. I'm just wondering why you suddenly dropped it down to Holcombe as the parish starts right up there. Is there a sort of technical reason for it or was there something else that we should know about?
Yeah, thanks to our councillors. Yeah, I, I think it's the highways. The highways have looked at this and they have fed back to us. And I don't think they believe that there is a suitable location between there and Holcombe. The, the parish boundary actually runs along the A379. As you come up Tinmouth Hill, everything on the right is in our parish boundary. But our parish boundary on the left doesn't start until you get to that Minidab Thatch House. I know Holcombe have got a sign there on a small triangular piece of grass. That perhaps would have been ideal, but I don't think county are over enthusiastic about that. So I'll see if the clerk wants to comment as well. So maybe the clerk has got some more updated information on it.
Uh, uh, Chairman, it was just to clarify that the parish boundary actually runs down Oakhill Cross Road, which is by the Toll House on the left. And it then goes across the A379 and then disappears down Cliff Road on, on the other side. So it's a little, in fact, it is quite close to where the Tinmouth sign is. But unfortunately, there isn't much of a suitable verge near Oakhill Cross Road, which I believe is why councillor Pedrick was suggesting a little further down.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you councillors, thank you. So councillor Dawson, please go ahead.
Very, uh, very excited about this because I've been quite jealous of Tinmouth signs ever since they went up. It's really stunning. Um, I'm just wondering the, um, sign, the Dawlish sign already going in, going into Holcombe. Um, that sign is in quite a bit of disre, disrepair, um, in that some of the decals come off. The Dawlish Town Council crest is half, has half disappeared. Uh, I know a few, few councillors and I before the first lockdown were out cleaning road signs and it was in quite a state. So I didn't know if it was possible that, um, those, or whether those are being included in this. And then I was also wondering from the environmental point of view if structurally they're sound, whether or not it would be possible to explore if they were included, like a heavy duty decal replacement as opposed to replacing the whole structure. Um, and I also don't recall seeing any, but it's probably my memory with several lockdowns, any of the designs. So I'd be really keen to see them if they have gone out and I've missed them somewhere. Oh lovely, if anyone's got that on email, I'd really like to see it, please.
Chairman, if I may, I'll circulate the design. It did go before council, I can't remember the date. Um, and regards the other signs that are in situ, they're obviously, um, markers for the settlements rather than the parish. Um, and one of the first things I did when I joined the council was ask if we could get those, uh, templates renewed because like you say, they have completely faded away. Uh, and Devon County weren't aware of the prints anymore being in existence. So I mean, it would be nice to get them looking nice and bright because as I drive to Dawlish through King Stainton, their signs are of a similar make from Devon County and their logos are in pristine condition. So I'm not quite sure what's happened to ours, uh, but it is something that if we can get them replaced, I would like to see that.
Excellent, thank you. And councillor Terry Loutha, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. I, I don't want to add to the confusion, but I will. Has the councillor Pedrick considered the, the, the sort of thing that they do on the continent? Namely, they have a little sign that says, as you leave the town. And they quite often have a little town that says, thank you for visiting. And they're actually get the name in twice if you like. I think it's a nice friendly sort of thing to do. I, I always like to know where I've come out of the town, especially like I do going into it. And of course, the more names, times you get our, our name in the papers, the better.
Thank you councillor Loutha, I like that idea. And I, I have seen that many times in, in other, in other counties, the sign saying, thank you for visiting. Um, councillor Pedrick?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'll just, just respond to councillor Loutha's question. Yeah, it was something that, that had occurred to me, but I have to say that when, when I first mentioned this well over a year ago, we had no idea what it was going to cost. And I'm very agreeably surprised that we can get one of these signs for less than a thousand pounds. Not very much less, but less than a thousand pounds. So I'm sure that we could explore other, other options as well to say, thank you for visiting parish at Dawlish. Yes, most certainly. Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you councillors, thank you councillor Pedrick. Okay, so, um, now moving on to item number 13, Helping Dawlish, a verbal update as to the current operation of the Helping Dawlish collaboration. So can I ask, um, our project officer Angie, would you like to update us please? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just a, a brief update. Um, firstly, uh, this last weekend, we delivered a fish and chip supper to a hundred and ten families or individuals, um, to help lift their morale over the current period. Uh, the referrals were made by a number of different organisations from Community Transport through to Assist Tinbridge, Dawlish Christian Fellowship. And we achieved the delivery over two nights through the use of, uh, the kind services of 11 volunteers, as it was quite a logistical challenge. Uh, last week, some, uh, members may be aware that, uh, David Forst did a video on, uh, what did Brunel do for Dawlish? And again, it was a local history talk to try to raise, uh, people's spirits. It was a partnership, a project between Helping Dawlish, the UK Community Fund and also Dawlish Beach Cams. And I'm pleased to report that on the night, we had about an audience of 80 people attending throughout the talk. And since then, it has been viewed over 5,000 times on Dawlish Beach Cams. So it's done a lot for tourism for the town and hopefully raised local people's spirits. On a really good news front, um, I'd like to report that, uh, the town council coordinated a bid to the Tinbridge COVID-19 Hardship Recovery Fund for a project called Click and Collect Tablet to Go. And yesterday we found out that our grant has been awarded in full, which is nine thousand eight hundred pounds to the project over the next, uh, nine months. It is basically aimed at improving digital access, reducing loneliness and improving mental health. And the way it will work is that there will be a loan of 10 tablets with training uh, within the community for the first period of the project and it is hoped to make it sustainable. Uh, but the group is enormously pleased that its application was successful. I will say the maximum we could have applied for was 10,000. Um, so I think, uh, we're all enormously pleased that the application was successful. The lead partners in the application will be Open Door, Assist Tinbridge. Uh, Community Transport will be delivering them and, uh, as I say, the enormous, enormous pleasure of the application was successful. I'd now like to draw your attention to our knickerbox. Um, some of you may be aware that Helping Dawlish has recently launched a knickerbox. Uh, we became aware through our links with local schools, uh, and others that young women were having problems accessing new knickers and also, uh, wet wipes. It is something that's happened within schools that, uh, for young ladies who cannot access them at home or for whatever reason are able to access a brown bag with their, these items in. And it became clear that one of the charities that had provided these in the past is no longer able to do so. So Helping Dawlish has come together and has now a knickerbox for the donation of new bikini knickers of all ages for young ladies and for wet wipes in Assist Tinbridge. And I have to say, uh, we are quite pleased already that things have started to be donated. Um, I'm sorry if it's not the normal thing you discuss in a town council meeting, but Helping Dawlish doesn't spare any blushes. We've also become aware, this week, we have a regular meeting roughly every two weeks. And on Tuesday, um, the 11, 11 of the 13 organisations met or were represented. And we're starting to discover other areas, uh, of need within the town that Helping Dawlish is looking longer term to address as we come out of the pandemic. And that is an ongoing work between Rock and Roots and many others who are involved as to what can potentially happen. Finally, uh, within the Helping Dawlish remit, and I do mention this each time, um, as you all know, the volunteers are up at the hospital and that continues, um, with the marshalling for the vaccinations. Um, and for example, we have 25 volunteers engaged this week over four days between 8am roughly and 6pm marshalling in the car park. And that continues every week at the moment. Um, I will say, uh, a grateful thanks to councillor Loutha, uh, and the mayor and the town clerk, um, who authorised the purchase of six more additional mobile radios on behalf of the events committee. Uh, as we've been using radios in the car park and we had 14, but with the number of volunteers, we needed to make them COVID secure so people could go home with them and clean them. And so we have an additional six radios and that has made a difference to how we're functioning in the car park. And on the final bit of, bit of good news, I'm sure you would have seen on the local press that the volunteers were actually recognised a week ago last Monday, uh, by a clap by the NHS staff from within the hospital and the surgery who came out and clapped all the hospital vol, car park volunteers who, as I have said before, come from town council, come from, uh, the Friends of Dawlish Hospital. We've now got some rotary involved and also Dawlish celebrates carnival. Um, so I hope you will agree, it's enormously positive report as we progress through the pandemic. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much Angie, thank you for that video. Thank you very much Angie, thank you for that really positive report from Helping Dawlish. And I'd like to say thank you to all the organisations within the Helping Dawlish collaboration for all the work that they have been doing and continue to do. I'm really happy to hear about the fish, fish and chip supper that you organised and about the successful grant for the Click and Collect Tablets project. I think that's really exciting. And thank you, I'm really interested to hear about the next knickerbox project. And I think that is really an important topic, it can't be forgotten. And I'd like to say as well, a big thank you to all the volunteers to help, to help with the car park duties for the vaccination clinics to help them take place. So a big thank you. Councillor Terry Lowther, please go ahead.
Chair, lovely councillor Wiggley was first.
I concede the order again. Councillor Wiggley, sorry, please go ahead, I apologise.
Thank you, madam mayor. But I think you pretty much said everything I wanted to say. So I simply wanted to express my thanks and gratitude to Angie and all of the Helping Dawlish team and all the volunteers and to, to say it's fantastic work that you're doing. And thank you very much and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wiggley. Councillor Morehood, you're next in the hand queue, please go ahead.
Thank you, madam mayor. Yes, I mean, it's amazing what's, what's being done by all these groups brought together. And I particularly admire our projects officer and all the work she does to help access loans and to bring people together on behalf of us, this council. The one thing I was going to remark on was the knickerbox project. I was absolutely shocked to hear something that I hear about in third world countries. And I'm sure many of us make donations to similar kinds of charitable organisations. It's, it's surprising, disappointing to think that we have such needs in our own community. And I am, I am shocked that I haven't known about this before. And I certainly will be supporting it myself. But thank you Angie and all the others you work with for bringing all these things to our attention. I don't know what else to say. I just have such admiration for you all. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morehood. Councillor Terry Lowther, please go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not going to take up very much time on this one, I'm afraid. It's all been said, hasn't it? But I think I will just say that it's a reflection of the style of the town that somebody like Angie can pull people together and do such admirable work. It is, it's, that's the right word, it's admirable. We really need to admire the people who are doing this, the people who are organising it. I'm delighted, councillor Morehood, for once, I'm lost for words. Thank you so much.
Thank you councillor Lowther. Councillor Dawson, please go ahead.
I just wanted to make a tiny comment about the knickers really after hearing councillor Morehood. And it was really just to say that we've always had families and individuals living month to month in this town. And it's something that's gotten a lot worse in the last twelve months. And even with furlough extending, people who have been struggling on their one hundred percent wages are certainly going to struggle on eighty percent because your outgoing's don't necessarily reduce just because you can't work. So I think there's going to be a lot of support needed for local families and I think this is a great start.
Thank you councillor Dawson, thank you. Any other councillors' comments? Okay, thank you. So thank you very much Angie for that update. So now we move on to item number sixteen, additional allotment land. So this is to consider the recommendation of the Civic Communities Committee to formally investigate potential sites for additional allotment space and the means by which that can be achieved. So I'd like to invite the chair of CAC, councillor Morehood, to go ahead, please.
Thank you, madam chair. Well, the current allotments site was first identified in two thousand and five and began in about two thousand and seven. At that time, we had a waiting list of twenty eight people and I believe now it's many dozens more than that. I'm sure the town clerk, I believe it's about sixty something.
It's approach, it's approaching seventy, chairman.
Yes. So it's becoming an urgent need, although in one of the planning applications along Sekmaiton Lane, there was mention of some allotments. I don't know that that has progressed very far. I only hope that like a lot of things in planning applications, like community centres and nursing homes and so forth, it doesn't just disappear down the plug hole. So it really is important that we, we look. I have made some tentative inquiries myself and as yet haven't found anywhere. We need small or medium, in my opinion, we need small or medium parcels of land for sale or to let, suitable for allotments. They need vehicular access anywhere in the parish, basically. We've got people all around the parish who want to do some growing of, grow their own. It's very much more important these days, and especially for families on low income. It's also good for the wellbeing, for the benefit of the children as well as the adults, just to be out there in the open air. I, I would hope that we will be able to ask for this on social media. But also to approach, for example, land agents like Rendles, that's just one name, there are, there are several. And any, any of us who know any local landowners. I know Devon County doesn't own a great deal of land around here, other than two or three small holdings. And as far as I'm aware, Timbridge doesn't really hold any land other than managed green spaces. But we can just hope that there is somebody around here, around the parish itself, who will be able to identify and offer some suitable land. We need to, we need to help all these people on the waiting list. We need to do something about it if we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morehood. Councillor Linda Pedrick, please go ahead.
Thank you, chair. This isn't new really. I remember when we first came in years ago, we were having conversations about this then. But at that time, I think we talked about that plotter lands by Lanhearn, which does belong to Teenbridge. And I think we talked about a possibility of having allotments there. So I don't know if that's worth following up, but that's one suggestion. And yes, I think going on Facebook, using social media is a good idea. But is it, are we limited by price or are you hoping to get it free? Or is there any details about how we're going to get this land, what it's going to cost? I think the clerks.
Thank you, thank you Andrew, please go ahead.
Thank you, chairman. Just in terms of Lanhearn, yes, I spotted that as well on the national allotment map and made inquiries of Teenbridge. But they have confirmed that the council has now set aside this site for housing or other potential income producing options. So the TDC would not be selling or leasing the land to us in that regard at that site. In terms of us as a council, we have a few options that we could pursue should land become available. Bear with me a second, I've lost the page, here we go. But the allotment act nineteen oh eight allows us to have a freehold or leasehold interest in a portion of land. We can also enter into a tenancy like we have at Brownsbrook with a, with a major landowner. We can purchase land in advance of requirements, although our need is now and it's quite clear that during lockdown, our waiting list has exploded. We're, we're, we're being contacted daily with people asking to be added to the list, which at the current rate, you might be considerably older by the time you get your allotment. So another piece of land for allotments is really quite important. The council can also compulsory purchase land, but obviously that I should imagine would be a last resort because that can, you know, cause local friction and division. So I would suggest that's something we wouldn't want to pursue. We've just got to put the feelers out there and ask if there is any land available that we can look into purchasing and improving for that purpose. And this really is the first step in formalising that so that we can go out and do such a thing. Obviously, anything would come back via CAC with a recommendation to the council and perhaps via FNGP if there are any budgetary requirements. It may not even be something that can be delivered this year, it may need to be built into future budgets. You know, at the moment, we just don't know what that, that will look like, but we've got to start somewhere.
Thank you Andrew, thank you. Okay, I think councillor Heath, you're next in the blue hand queue, please go ahead.
Thank you, madam mayor. Just to throw into the mix, I haven't got any evidence for it, but I have actually heard in the past, maybe, you know, it's still happening. If we really are going to find it difficult to get land, which I understand no one has a big bit, oh, we're built on that, which is what happens. It might sound a bit bizarre, but it's not quite so bizarre and it would need to be checked out. But some schemes, some places around the country, they've advertised generally, like on our own websites, say, or the local press, asking for people who can't cope with looking after their own gardens, especially old people who it's just their garden, it's just weeds. And they can, on a sort of ad hoc arrangement, maybe we need a little bit of paperwork to agree that they can go on to their land, as it were. They go in literally, dig all the weeds, use it. And it's, they're basically allotment. Obviously, the arrangement, I don't know between, can they take a few vegetables or not? Between the two of them, but it has happened. Maybe if we get desperate or maybe it's a good idea. I throw that to all of you just to have a think about. It looks like Andrew's got some answers on that one. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Heath. Andrew.
Thank you, chairman. Just quickly, yes, there is a scheme locally. I haven't got the details immediately to hand. But I know that one person that did inquire to go on our allotment waiting list was a little horrified when we told her to wait. And we suggested that if she was interested, they contact this group and she duly took up the offer. So it does exist locally and we can make that information more widely available. I'll just need to retrieve it.
That would be good if you could do that, yeah.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you councillor Heath. And I think I do know of the group locally that has been organising that in the past. It's the Dawlish Transition Group, which I used to be able to go along to their meetings when meetings were held face to face. And I think, I think that is a good, a really good suggestion because I have seen quite a, quite a few overgrown gardens where the owners either don't have time or aren't, aren't able to go out and look after them. And so I think it's a really good suggestion. Councillor, who's next in the
Councillor Goodman Bradbury.
Councillor Goodman Bradbury, sorry. Please go ahead.
Thank you, madam mayor. I think probably a lot of the things I was going to mention have been already said. I was involved with supporting some very large gardens in Dawlish Warren to be turned over to allotments during that scheme a couple of years ago. So I was going to suggest that. I was also going to suggest that we maybe do a press release and get in touch with Nub News and various other agencies and do a real call out for, for land or plots. I think that's really the best way of doing it. Then we might be surprised that there might be some, people would be happy to support that. Because I think everyone's aware, we've got a very long waiting list. And we've recently had some very excited new members to the Brands Brook allotments. And I'm being a member myself, I know how important it is to have that, that opportunity. So I feel very lucky to do so. But I would just encourage us to do whatever we can to, to get some more sites ready for the town and other members to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Goodman Bradbury. Councillor Morehood, please go ahead.
Thank you, madam mayor. Yes, it's been said. I looked up Lanhearn, they used to be Gracian in favour allotments, but they were never official. And then the land was earmarked for, potentially for teen housing. Yes, the garden share scheme has been run for some years with some degree of success by the Dawlish Transition. I think they've changed their names now, but I've lost track of it. I would actually like to make a proposal, if I may. And just bearing in mind that none of our plots are national size, which is, I think, two hundred and fifty square metres for a full sized plot or a hundred and twenty for a half, ours vary considerably. So if we were all offered any parcel of land, we could use it according to the needs at that time. Plots could be sized accordingly, I'm assuming. So I would like to propose that this council sets out now to advertise by social media and or any other means to ask for anyone with a suitable area of land. Doesn't have to be large, but a suitable area of land for use as allotments to offer that to, for consideration by the town council with the proviso that it would need to have some kind of vehicular access. I think leave it as simple as that to start with. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morehood for that proposal. And councillor Dawson, you have your hand raised. Please go ahead.
I was just going to offer to second that for councillor Morehood.
Thank you very much councillor Dawson. So we've got the proposal seconded. And so all those councillors.
Sorry, sorry, chairman. I, I believe councillor Mary Lowther had her hand up. I'm not sure if she was seconding or wanted to speak.
Okay councillor Lowther, please go ahead.
No, I was waiting to second.
Okay, thank you. So all those councillors in favour of going with that, please raise your hands.
That's unanimous, chairman.
Excellent, thank you. That's, that's really good. So thank you councillors, we've come to the end of tonight's agenda. The end of tonight's meeting. Thank you very much everybody for a good meeting. And we haven't had to ask for an extension of time. So that's another really good reason for a good meeting. So thank you all. Take care everybody and enjoy the good weather to come. It's starting to get more spring light. Take care. Thank you. Goodbye.